Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Lenore for Tuesday, December the 7th, 2021. We welcome you here this evening. Glad you're with us. It feels good to be kind of back and be able to be together again and nice to have a room full of people again. We hadn't had one in a while, so everybody continue to be safe, of course, but we're glad to have you with us tonight. A few minutes, we'll start with a moment of silence and we will remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance as we get started. I'm gonna do, go ahead and do the roll call before we do that, just so we'll know who all was here on that. So we're gonna start that with our council members. Of course, I am Joe Gibbons, the mayor, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Presswood and come around, if you will, for our roll call.
Ralph Presswood.
Ben Willis.
Todd Perdue.
Chrissy Thomas.
David Stevens.
Ike Perkins.
Jonathan Beal.
Attorney Timothy Rohr.
City Manager Scott Hildebrand.
Okay.
Shirley Cannon.
Our City Clerk.
Joshua Harris, Division Director.
Thank you. And we have Ginny Wheelock, our Planning Director, is also here, and Chief Phelps, our Chief of Police, is here. I will go ahead and call the others that are on Zoom with us tonight. Donna Bean.
Here.
Finance Director, thank you. Fire Chief Ken Hare.
I'm here.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Kaylin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
I'm here.
Thank you. Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
Here.
And Public Works Director Jared Wright.
I'm here.
Thank you that I missed anyone that was on the call. Thank you. Glad you're all with us this evening. We got that out of the way. As we go to a moment of silence, please remember today is the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day from December the 7th, 1941. Please remember our country and all those that were involved in World War II and actually the starting of World War II and those early days and the terrible horrors at Pearl Harbor 80 years ago today. So please keep your thoughts and prayers to continuing with our country and all those people that were involved there. So at this point in time, we're gonna rise for a moment of silence, remain standing Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We would like to have one honor we would mention tonight that we had a promotion in our police department. Lieutenant John Howard was promoted to Lieutenant this past week, and we certainly are thankful for Lieutenant Howard and all he's meant to our police department. He has been with our department since 2007 and has 14 years of service with the department and with a number of things, patrol officer, master patrol, narcotics investigator, and many other things, sergeant, patrol sergeant, and firearms instructor. So we appreciate that Lieutenant Howard is taking this role and I know he will do a fine job with that. Chief Phelps, thank you for all you do with those things there. So proud of him and hope that that will be a good move. Okay, we will now, it's time for our Oath of Office for our council members who were just recently reelected. Thank goodness we have our incumbents that were with us on our city council, very proud of them and their service to our city now for many years. And we're gonna start tonight with the Oath of Office for Councilmember Jonathan T. Beal, and that will be done by the Honorable Greg Cornet, who is the Caldwell County Magistrate here. So, Mr. Beal.
Okay.
And Mr. Cornet, glad to have the father of Jonathan with us, Judge Beverly Beal. Thank you, sir, for being with us. Thank you.
Jonathan, you're placing your hand on the Bible that's for you that Beal has told me, left hand, and raise your right hand. Repeat after me, sir. I, Jonathan T. Beal.
I, Jonathan T. Beal.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the laws and Constitution of the United States.
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
to the state of North Carolina.
to the state of North Carolina.
and to the constitutional powers and authorities.
and to the constitutional powers and authorities.
which are or may be established for the government thereof.
which are or may be established for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution.
and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution.
of said state.
of said state.
not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
I, Jonathan Beal.
I, Jonathan Beal.
further swear.
further swear.
that I will execute the duties of the office of council member.
will execute the duties of the office of council member.
to the city of Lenore, North Carolina.
to the city of Lenore, North Carolina.
to the best of my ability and judgment.
to the best of my ability and judgment.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Councilmember Beal. That would be good to do it over there. All go to them together? What are you gonna do, say? Together?
Whatever best, I don't think he can do that three times.
Okay. That's good.
But now, I don't know how he's gonna do it when he gets there.
I'm not planning to. All right, we will now have the Oath of Office for Councilmembers James I. Ike Perkins, David F. Stevens, and Crystal, Chrissy D. Thomas, and that will be administered by the Honorable District Court Judge Robert M. Brady, retired, and we are honored to have Judge Brady and his wife Sheila with us tonight. Thank you for being here. We will ask our council members to come down for that. Judge, we're gonna let you do it at the microphone. It'd be good. That'd be great. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have seen how these individuals, both personally and collectively, have taken their jobs so seriously as members of this council.
Yes, sir.
And therefore, it's a real privilege for me to be able to administer this Oath of Office to them. If you'll just kind of get in the curved area there for me, that'd be great.
Okay.
And each of you will have somebody who will hold the Bible, I'm assuming.
Actually, I don't know.
Okay. Well, can you hold it in your left hand? Okay, well, that's good. Are you able to hear me okay?
Sir.
All right. Can you move in just a little bit more, make it, you know, this might be a better picture for the photographer. And since there are three of you, I'm not gonna read out your name, I'm gonna ask you to state your name as we go along, if that's okay. And can you repeat after me? Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Correct, left hand on the Bible, raise your right. I state your name.
I, David Stevens.
Chrissy Thomas.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution and laws.
the Constitution and laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
that I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
and bear true allegiance.
and bear true allegiance.
to the state of North Carolina.
to the state of North Carolina.
and to the constitutional powers.
and to the constitutional powers.
and authorities.
and authorities.
which are or may be established.
which are or may be established.
for the government thereof.
for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor to support.
and I will endeavor to support.
maintain and defend.
maintain and defend.
the Constitution of said state.
the Constitution of said state.
not inconsistent with.
not inconsistent with.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
I state your name.
I, David Stevens.
I, Chrissy Thomas.
I, James Perkins.
further swear.
further swear.
that I will execute the duties.
that I will execute the duties.
of the office of council member.
the office of council member.
for the city of Lenore.
for the city of Lenore.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
to the best of my ability and judgment.
to the best of my ability and judgment.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations. If the three council members will come up here and sign their oath, please.
Jonathan, do you want a picture with all four of them?
Yes, once they sign, we'll get a picture.
Okay. Jonathan, do you want to come back?
Give us these, these will work good.
Yeah.
He walks, he walks.
He said he was a physician, not a magician.
then, and then the Beal on the right side, and then the sit on the right, and then, yeah, then the council members in the middle.
Well, do you want us in or out of the picture?
We're out.
Let me just move these chairs.
We're out.
Hang on just a second, Jonathan.
All right, one, two, three. Y'all look great, smile. Y'all look great. Now jump in the hair. Again, congratulations to our council members who continue to serve our city. Thank you for all your service and what you've been to our city. We're very proud of our council and we are, we kind of looked at across the state as a little bit different because we have a great council that works together. I know a lot of cities that are very envious of us because they don't have the same way they look at things. But thank you very much for all your service, very proud to serve with you, and I'm glad that we can all continue to serve together for two more years at least and maybe, well, maybe longer, we'll see. Thank you, Judge Brady. And Sheila will be with us tonight, you're always welcome. I think our magistrate slipped out, did he? But anyway, we'll thank him as well, so. All right, we will move on then to the next item on our agenda is our election of our Mayor Pro Tem. Every two years, according to our charter, we select a Mayor Pro Tem for that, and tonight we will follow through with that. Would like to just say a couple of quick things about the job. Of course, the Mayor Pro Tem's job is to fill in for the mayor at certain times when that might be needed, and also the Mayor Pro Tem runs our council meeting called the Committee of the Whole, and that, and of course, I will say this, it's not only the job of the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, but all of our council to try to do everything you can to be at all the events that you can. That's ribbon cuttings and ground breakings and new business openings and patting people on the back, however that's possible, so it's the job of all of us to be a part of that, so, and I appreciate that you guys do that all the time and hope we will continue working together that way, but I just want to let you know what that is. Also, we'd like to say, I know there's been a lot of things that were talked about on how we select a Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem is not the leading vote getter, at least it has not been on this council, it might have been in former councils or all that kind of thing. It's, we have just always selected our Mayor Pro Tems of those who would like to serve, who have the time to serve, and we've appreciated that very much. And I think after tonight, I'd like to propose, and I've talked to council members about it, that at the end of each two years of service, that we look to select a different Mayor Pro Tem and give everyone a chance that serves on this council to serve as Mayor Pro Tem if they so desire. Now, you don't have to if that's something you don't have the time to do, but after a two-year service each time, and when we select them, that we would look at that. Our last three Mayor Pro Tems have all served four years, and that's been fine, and we will, and that's not something that has to change, all that, but I think at the, we would be better looked at at the end of each two years to give everyone an opportunity if they would like to serve in that capacity. I'm not saying that's, we're making any change tonight, if anything, I'm just saying that's something we ought to look at in the future, and I think the council is pretty much in agreement with that. So anyway, I will now open up to any discussion or motions or whatever of who would continue or like to be our seat, our Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilmember Chrissy Thomas to be Mayor Pro Tem, continue her seat and as Mayor Pro Tem. I think the past couple of years have been kind of a tricky time to be anything, to anybody here in the room, I mean, geez, and I would like to see Chrissy continue to serve as Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, we will, I don't know, we need to call for a vote? We can? That'd be fine. Okay, we will call for a vote then, all in favor of current Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Chrissy Thomas, remaining and serving another two-year term as our Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Mayor Pro Tem Thomas, thank you for your service these last two years, and thank you and thank you for wanting to continue that service for these next two years.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate that, and thank all of you council members for your service and what you do, it certainly is great that we all work together the way, that way we do, so. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you for what's being done, so, thank you. We will now move on then to the next part of our agenda, which is matters scheduled for public hearing. The first is item A, is a public hearing will be held for the second reading of an ordinance amending chapters 1, 2, 5, and 9, and Appendix C of the Lenore Code of Ordinances to address updates prompted by recent legislative changes to the general statutes. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as submitted. I will now open the public hearing for any discussion. We have at the podium our director of, Planning Director or Director of Planning, Ginny Wheelock, and we appreciate that, so I will turn it over to you, Ginny, for any discussion that you may have to let us know about this, and then if there's anyone who would like to address us, we'll open that up as well.
All right, I won't take up much of your time. You recall at the last council meeting, I gave a brief presentation about this. This ordinance does a lot of really technical cleanup type things. I will offer one caveat is that this legislation was adopted and made to be effective in a pretty short time span, and they're still rolling out some guidance as far as like what's coming out of the school of government and the League of Municipalities and the people that guide us on how to do this stuff. So there may be a follow-up ordinance for some of our ordinances that want, that are going to remain criminalized. We may need to put some additional references in those ordinances instead of referencing our Chapter 1. We're still trying to get guidance on that, but it was too late to change it for tonight anyway because it's gotta go to two readings, so I would urge you to adopt this. There's nothing wrong in here, but if I'm back before you in a couple months with another ordinance with some additional changes, that's why it's moving quick, so. Chief and I have been talking about this, I don't think he probably has anything to add, but he's back there if you have questions.
Okay.
We mostly charge under state statutes anyway, so this is really maybe one or two, you know, charges a year, if that, when we pulled the stats on it.
Any questions for Ginny or Chief Phelps, either one, concerning this?
Not here.
After listening and studying diligently.
Okay.
Yeah, interesting reading.
It's a light read.
Do we need to make a motion?
Well, I mean, come out, we're still in discussion right now, open for the public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this proposal? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing then and turn it over to council for any action you'd like to take.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes as proposed by Planning Director and state law changes.
Okay. You heard the motion? Any other discussion? We'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. All right, we'll move in now to our second public hearing. This is a public hearing will be held to consider approval of a rezoning for three parcels located at 918 Creekway Drive Northwest from R6, that's High Density Residential, to B2, General Business, North Carolina PIN number 2840600405, PIN number 2840601686, and PIN number, North Carolina PIN number 2840602953, as submitted by Reverend Joshua Edwards on behalf of the Lenore First Wesleyan Church. This request also includes the Whistle Pig Enterprises Lot. Staff recommends approval based upon the consistency statement as listed on page six of the staff report as follows. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it clarifies and streamlines the zoning design standards for an existing church and adjacent property. Consistent with the policy concepts found in the plan, the proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it facilitates a church use as a by right development, making it a conforming use for its location. Rezoning of all the subject properties provides predictable form and design for the overall neighborhood. All right, I will open the public hearing for any discussion and turn it over to Mrs. Wheelock again for any clarification or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before we start discussion.
Okay.
Just in the interest of transparency, I am personal friends and colleagues with Reverend Edwards.
Okay.
At the beginning of this process, he did call me to say, how do I, who do I call, who do I approach about some ordinance issues, and I said, call the Planning Department, and we've had no further discussion since.
Okay.
I have no personal stake in the property, I'm not a member of the church in any way, so after talking to our attorney, Mr. TJ Rohr, he feels that I'm okay to stay in the discussion and vote.
Okay.
If, as long as everybody's good with that, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
These legislative hearings, you're good. So this request is pretty straightforward, it's for an existing church, the applicants are in the audience, if you've got additional questions for them, they came to us with a signed proposal, it's on Creekway Drive. Normally, all of the zoning districts along our big commercial corridors would allow for you to put a 50 square foot sign up on a five lane like that. Because the church is zoned residential, even if they have the special use permit to do it, the development standards are still fairly restrictive because it's contemplating probably a different location than on Creekway Drive. So we thought a rezoning made sense, that's what we recommended to them, and they made application, and then there is one little remainder parcel between the church and David Walker's property, the Whistle Pig is his LLC, they're on the corner of Main and Creekway. So we looped that into this request and noticed for the whole thing so that we cleaned up that map. So we don't expect a lot of new development, but I think it's just gonna be cleaner moving forward if the church wants to build some parking like they've talked about or a sign, then we apply the B2 standards, looks good, get our street yard landscaping and buy rights, so it's all administrative for them, they don't have to amend a conditional use permit or something, so.
Okay.
That's all I have, I'm here for questions.
Any questions of Ginny concerning this proposal? Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time concerning this public hearing for 918 Creekway Drive? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to City Council for any action that they would like to take.
Mayor, I think it makes sense, it's in keeping with our comprehensive plan, it gives them by right status, and unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to make a motion that it be approved as it's been presented by Planning Department.
Thank you. We have a motion, Councilmember Perdue, to accept this consideration of proposal as presented for these parcels located at 918 Creekway Drive concerning this change. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on then to the third public hearing tonight, which is held to consider adoption of an ordinance declaring the conditions of a certain real property owned by Michael S. Coffey and located at 1319 Jolly Place. This is parcel ID 09148-1-29 and North Carolina PIN number 2850083796, to be a danger to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of inhabitants of the city and constituting a public nuisance in accordance with Section 12-12, subsection 16 of the Lenore Code of Ordinances, directing city staff to abate the same. All right, I will open the public hearing for any discussion on that. Anyone would like to bring it up? Ginny, you're up again.
I know, all of my colleagues have contacted me and thanked me for how many items I put on this agenda, so. So this is a little bit different than how we normally do this. You know, the nuisance code includes authorization for staff to go in and abate public nuisances that have already been delineated by this body. So the ordinance says weeds that are grown up a certain number of inches are a public nuisance, and if you have that, staff can, you know, enforce and go in and the city can clean it up if the owner fails to. We also have this section 12-1216 that says, and anything else that is a public nuisance can be declared a public nuisance by this body. So we've got this property that has junk vehicles, junk trash, debris, we've got people living in structures that are not dwellings, they can't even be brought up to the code. But as the PD and I and the Planning Department worked together on this, we kept kind of running into this like, all right, well, this is a junk vehicle, but they're using it as a residence, or this is a dilapidated structure, but they're living, like, can we go in and do this? And there are some different abatement timelines with towing a vehicle versus what you have to do if it's a house versus the standard nuisance. So we put it all into one item and it kind of explained it to this owner, that's how we enforced, and now this ordinance ties it all That's how we enforced, and now this ordinance ties it all together. There may be individual violations that we didn't need to ask you to abate, but as a whole, this puts us on the same timeline for everything and gives us a really clear direction moving forward on what we need to do. This has been an ongoing multiple year. We've done many cleanups out there. There's been a lot of police activity.
Well, there's 18 months difference in the pictures that you've given us, and there's not been any improvement.
Not at all. I mean, we've spent some city money baiting out there, and it just goes right back to it's just not a good situation. The owner does not live on the property. He is in Gateway Nursing.
Nurse facility.
Yeah. We've been in contact with him. He was not able to come tonight because they don't have transportation this late. We've talked to his nurses and the staff there, too, and he doesn't have the capacity to clean up this problem. So any money we spent would get added on as a lien to the property, but we'd be looking to pull all the vehicles out, pull the shed down, pull all the trash out, and make it very clear that there's to be nobody living out there in tents and sheds and under tarps and stuff, so.
All right. Any discussion in all council? Any questions?
Can a residence be occupied to be considered a nuisance, or do they have to be empty?
Well, typically, we don't do any houses as nuisance because we enforce under the minimum housing, and so both occupied houses could be in violation, or the abandoned structures and the contribution of slum and blight are included in the minimum housing chapter. So we typically wouldn't do this, but there is not a house on this property. There's kind of like a lien to. I mean, you could see in the pictures what there's in your packets. That's all that exists.
But clearly, we can take action on an occupied dwelling based on the minimum housing standards, and we've shown that.
Sure, yeah.
So yes, an occupied dwelling, we can still take action if it's a nuisance and a health hazard to the individual and those surrounding.
Which is what we're seeing here. And then, so I can't just go and set up, invite this property in the city and just set up a tent and just live like this.
Correct. You should not do that. It is true that there are certain properties in the city that we know the owners are living on their own property in a way that we wish they wouldn't, and it's probably not that safe. And until APS is able to get them to a better place, code enforcement doesn't work. The individuals occupying this property do not own this property. They are being allowed to stay by the owner, and he has not been successful in getting them to vacate, so we're going to try to clean it up so that there's at least not a place to stay. It's challenging.
Yes.
It's just like cleaning homeless camps and stuff. I mean, this is not going to be the end of this, but I think this gives us clear direction as staff on how we move forward with the next step. And it's going to be, you know, depending on our budget to when we can move and how much that's going to cost to take care of. And we do have another item on tonight's agenda that has some city monies being spent.
Chief, do you have anything to add to it?
It has been a long, difficult process. There was an original structure on top of the hill on the property. At that time, several years ago, Mr. Coffey was living there. There were, we executed several search warrants at that house. At some point in our enforcement period, over months, that structure burned. So some of him and some of the people that were in that structure moved to the shed down the hill and began to take up residence in the shed that you see in the pictures. And then he got to the point, hell, twice, he had to leave the property. We've made arrests there. We've recovered stolen property there. It is very unsanitary with the conditions the people are choosing to live in. I've talked to several of the neighbors by phone and in person when we've been out there, and it is a little complicated with the whole, it's not a structure, but there's people living in it. It's not a home residence. And so anything that we feel like we're at the place to where we need to take, we need to use every resource we can to the best of our ability to try to clean it up for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification, the burned-out house that these folks moved from is actually on the parcel next door. It's not on the same parcel. It doesn't have the same ownership. We chose to do them separately because of the relationship between the owners of the two properties we thought would actually make it more difficult. So we're here on this one. That's the problem, but there is a burned-out house next door that would be the next step. It's on the list. You know, it's just kind of tucked away, so.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just kind of a bad situation all the way around. We don't want to start a precedent of if you move into something, it's a house, because minimum housing has a much longer abatement period and a higher threshold than just the regular nuisances. So we want to kind of be clear that this is a public nuisance, and that's what we're asking for you to declare tonight.
Okay. Any other questions of Ginny concerning this? All right, anyone else that would like to address the council concerning this particular public hearing we're having tonight concerning this property on 1319 Jolly Place? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any action or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion of Councilmember Perkins that we adopt the adoption of the ordinance declaring the conditions of this certain real property at 1319 Jolly Place. Dangerous, I guess would be the best way to put it on that. Any other discussion? All right, call for question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes our matters for public hearing tonight. You've got one more in a few minutes on a different part. All right, we'll move then on to our consent agenda items. This consists of minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, November 2, 2021. Item B is a proposed restroom building addition. This is for Leo's. Consideration of request from Yokefella of Caldwell County to add a restroom building addition to the Lenora Emergency Outreach Shelter, which is Leo's, which is owned by the City of Lenora. And item C are amendments. These are municipal records retention. Staff recommends approval of the amendments as submitted by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, Division of Archives and Records amending the 2021 program record schedule for local government agencies as presented. The North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources is updating their website to include the new schedule. That's our consent agenda, item A through C. If anyone has any questions of anything. We do welcome our director of Yokefella, Sharon Harmon is here with us tonight. Thank you for coming. And if anybody has any questions, we might let you answer, but whatever. But I think that we kind of all understand what we're doing there and what Leo's is doing. I know it's been very, very busy down there, so. Anyway, I'll open it up for any discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the three consent agenda items as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion of Councilmember Preston Wood to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Cares unanimously. On that, thank you. And Sharon, thank you for what you do with Yokefella. I know it's been a really busy few weeks and months and years. There's been a lot of things going on, but I know, we appreciate it. Leo's, I know, stays very, very busy, and we appreciate. Hopefully, these things will help, these considerations that are being done on that. So we look forward to hearing some reports from you down the road if that's okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If anyone would like to address the council at this time, that is the time to do so. With anything, I know we have several people here. If anyone would like to address the council concerning anything, this is the time to do so. All right, no one right now? Okay, thank you. We will move on then. We do not have reports from our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of our city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, we have quite a few items tonight for your consideration. The first items are information items. The annual light show began on the square on Saturday, November 27, and that will run until the end of January. And also, the theme for downtown shopping this season, the shine on shop small. The second item you have there is annual luminaire display was scheduled for Friday, December 10 at 6:00. Due to the burn ban, that will not be happening this Friday. I spoke to both Public Works Director Jared Wright and also Fire Chief Harry today, and I think the decision is based on the state burn ban that we need to postpone that. Our goal would be to have that on the rain date, which we pray for some rain to have a rain date. It's February, not February, Friday, December 17. And I think they're calling maybe for some rain this weekend. Radford needs to speak about the drought, and then it might rain a little bit, but so hopefully that's scheduled for Friday, December 17 at 6:00 p.m., and we'll see what happens. If something happens, we can't have it. We'll try to reschedule that maybe after the first of the year. And I'll let Jared Wright, you want to speak to that at all, Jared?
Sure, this is something that we've wrestled with over the last couple of weeks since the statewide burn ban went into effect. And you know, we have a subsequent citywide burn ban that we implemented last week. So in consultation with the Forest Service and our own Fire Chief, Chief Harry, we watched the forecast for this current week, and this past weekend, we had a good shot at some rain during midweek. Of course, that has dwindled as we've come through the week now, so we have opted to postpone the event hopefully until December 17. If you look beyond that, if the burn ban is still in effect, the following Friday would be Christmas Eve, and the following Friday would be New Year's Eve. So we're looking at the, after the first of the year in 2022, to hold the event if we cannot do it next week, which would be December 17.
Thank you, sir.
So that's just for information. Also, downtown, our downtown merchants are hosting Elf on a Shelf game, and that's from November 24 through December 24. Everyone to collect a total of 25 digital stamps from downtown participating merchants will be eligible to go back and get a prize, similar to what we did over the Halloween season. And I think that was pretty popular with folks downtown and driving some traffic downtown. We're also doing some carriage rides, but those sold out or didn't sell out that were free, they went in a matter of minutes, a matter of minutes, free will fill up pretty fast. So that's full, and so we'll see about trying to get some digital. I think we've tried that, and Kaylin, do you want to mention any of that?
We were just really pleased to see how popular that event was, and we have plans to bring it back again next year and have it even bigger and more rides available for people, and we'll see how that goes. We were really pleased to see that fill up as quickly as it did.
Increase the cost.
Yeah, we may double the cost next year.
Double the cost.
Potentially, there might be a Venus here.
It's a demand there. I would announce the city offices will be closed on Thursday, December 23, Friday, December 24, Monday, December 27 for the Christmas holidays, and also, city office will be closed on Friday, December 31 for New Year's Day. The annual curbside tree pickup begins on Monday, January 3, and that wind on Friday, January 7. We do have a council meeting scheduled for the 21st, but hopefully, if you guys and gals would honor my request, let's cancel that meeting. We have some action tonight you will take. Hopefully, we'll make that meeting not necessary. So I know some folks had travel plans during that week, so we rearranged the schedule, so hopefully that can be canceled. There's several items tonight for your action. The first is a bid award for Crossroads Sewer Line Replacement Project. Bids were received on Tuesday, November 23 for that project. The low bid was submitted by Carolina Grading Utilities out of Jefferson in an amount of $1,908,830. That is the lowest responsive bidder on that. We recommend council approve that tentative award in that amount. We also have a contingency of 10% or $190,800. And several months ago, probably almost 12 months ago, you approved a loan request from the State of North Carolina at 2% to borrow 2.775 million for that project at 2.16% interest for 20 years. So we have a low interest rate. The bid came in below our estimate, and so we're very pleased with that. And Radford Thomas is on the call, but I think we recommend you award that and set the contingency at 10%.
Scott, a quick question. The word tentatively is in there. It doesn't normally appear in a bid award.
We have to wait the State of North Carolina to sign off on all the documents.
Thank you.
And I'm pleased to hear that the bid came in under budget in this environment that we were.
We were very pleased.
Doesn't happen much.
Mr. Thomas, do you want to comment at all?
All right, you've heard the proposal for the bid award for the Crossroads Sewer Line Replacement Project in the amount of $1,908,830, $908,830 to Carolina Grading and Utilities Incorporated. Is there any more discussion, question? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that the bid award for Crossroads Sewer Line Replacement Project be awarded as staff is submitted.
I have a motion of Councilmember Purdue to present this bid award to the company that we're talking about in that amount of money. No other question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
The second item tonight is a bid award for LHS renovations phase two. City staff took bids to go make improvements at the auditorium at the old high school, including general painting repairs, a new HVAC, change out and conversions of the lighting in auditorium to LED lighting. Low bid on that project was Precision Contracting for $105,219, and they're the lowest responsible bid on that. And as you're aware, we're using CDBG funds to fund that project, and it is funded. Kenny Storey is on the call as well to talk about that. You see some of the activity going on there with Foothills Performing Arts, some other folks, a lot of use is starting to take place, and some a lot of good things are happening up there.
Yes, it is. I was down there this afternoon. It really looks good inside.
I think several of you are involved in the upcoming performance over there.
Plays, yes. Narrators, I think.
Let's don't confuse the situation.
Let's hope we make it through that.
Mr. Storey, do you want to add anything?
I would just say it's a great project. We've got a lot of things going on down there. We've got a lot, a lot more to come, too, but I will say that it's been a great addition for the city to have Foothills Performing Arts in there, doing some things. We've got the programs coming up this weekend and the following weekend for the Christmas show, so it's going to be great. Those guys are doing a lot of work that we're not having to do as far as some cleanup stuff down there. So it's just overall is going to help that atmosphere down there for the whole city and for downtown, to getting people downtown as well, bringing people in from all other parts of the county.
I will say you need to make reservations for that play. It's also free.
That's true, you do.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I did speak to those guys yesterday, and I'm pretty sure for the one on Friday and Saturday of this week is almost totally sold out already, so a lot of people.
Given out.
I guess likely because it's free this weekend, but it's a great, great thing for our city, though. So kudos to those guys and to our staff that works down there as well.
Mr. Beal?
Mr. Storey, this is Jonathan Beal. Is this the final phase of the rehab for that auditorium, or is there more work to be done in the future?
Hopefully, there's more work to be done down there in the future as long as we continue to, you know, hopefully receive funds from the CDBG, but as well, we've got plans, not just for the auditorium, but we do have some plans in the work for the gymnasium and also Matt Cook Stadium down there. As most of you guys know, I mean, the Rotary Club, and the mayor's aware of this as well, and the manager, the Rotary Club is trying to raise money now to like money now to light the field at Matt Cook Stadium. So that'll be a big benefit for us for a lot of reasons. But we have a lot of work we want to do at that whole complex down there just to make it, make all of it better.
Thank you.
A lot going on there, and it's going to be a great addition for our, for our city to be not only the auditorium, the gym, and the stadium as well. One of the nicest fields that we have anywhere in the city. And it's well-used. So I think the lighting is going to make it even more potential to be used, maybe even have games from the high schools maybe want to play down there every now and then, bring, bring a match or a game to the city and do that. So a lot of other things that opens up, I think.
Mayor, I think we need to highlight the fact that Foothills Performing Arts agreed to do this presentation, this Christmas presentation in conjunction with the city for free.
It's true.
Same cost as our.
Car drive. Car drive.
Car drive.
It's not sold out. It's booked up.
That is great that they agreed to do this.
It is. Very honored to have the Foothills Performing Arts as making the, what will be called the campus at Historic Lenora High School. It's the new name, and what the name will be from here on out for it. And so we're glad that they have made that their home.
Sounds better than old.
The old.
The old Lenora.
Not old. It's historic.
You guys are kind of old.
I will mention one other thing while I got you guys on there. The Lenora Concert Band was down there this past weekend. They played down there on Sunday, which is sponsored by the Harper School of Performing Arts. They had a Christmas concert in the auditorium on Sunday. Mr. John Craig and his crew, they had a nice turnout for that. So we've got a lot going on down there. So, and hopefully a lot more to come.
Thank you, Ms. Storey, for all you're doing down there and working so well, putting things together. You're doing a great job with our staff.
I think it's so cool how the downtown is like expanding and how that, and how that the old Lenora, I always call it Lenora High School, but the old Lenora High School was expanding.
Who did that again?
With the mill, with the mill project going on, it just shows you all the great work that's going on. This is just one piece of it. But I think this is a big part of what's going on.
We're moving Lenora to that side of the town, that's for sure.
It's really, really great.
Fairfield, as you know. Okay. All right. You've heard the announcement for this bid award for the LHS renovations phase two. I will entertain a motion from council for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid award on the LHS renovations to the low bid of $105,219 from Precision Contracting Company.
Okay. You heard the motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the bid award as presented. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Mr. Hildebrand?
Mr. Mayor, Council, the next item you have tonight is order of abatement. This is for 706 Red Crest Drive. It also includes, it's two, two duplexes. So it's 716A, 716B Circle Drive, 704 Rich Crest Drive, 706 Rich Crest Drive. This property's been giving us numerous complaints over the last several years. Both police and planning have been working hard on this, and I'll let Ms. Wheelock fill you in with the next step.
Okay. Jenny?
All right. Anyone not heard of this property? And I know that that's what those left in the audience are here to sort of see what happens. This is definitely an atypical case. This is the first ordinance that I've done like this in my time here. Same thing with the housing inspector, Zach Clark, you know. There are some violations out there, housing violations. There are tenants that are stealing water, and we're having a hard time getting, keeping utilities on. And we're not getting cooperation from the owner or the property manager out there. It's not, normally, we would take houses that have been abandoned, and there's a big hole in the roof, and it, they're, they're tear downs. This is four units that really, even by definition, by code, I could not tear down. They're not, they don't need that much work. But the work's not happening. And we have asked to inspect them and asked to have the, you know, the utilities be turned back on and brought up to code, and we have not been successful in that. There are some tenants that are living there that are causing more problems. I think it's a management problem. So what this ordinance would do, they failed to improve the property in the time we gave them. This would allow us to essentially vacate and close, which is something that we very rarely do under the code. But they, it gives them up to a year before we could go in and then, okay, you've abandoned it, you're not doing anything, and we could do something again. It would give us the ability to evict any tenants that are left and board up and close those units. This is an inherited property. The owners are out of town. They have told us they intend to sell. They're, they're in that process, but they're dragging their feet on it. We're trying to do anything that would help solve the neighborhood issues immediately by trying to get those tenants evicted and the, the unit shut down until such time as a responsible owner is able to come and make the repairs. Since you've got, we've got a housing crisis here, and these are four possibly good units. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that it's a tear down, although that probably would be one way to, to immediately address these, these issues. So mostly, we've done nuisance cases here, and I know that there's been a lot of criminal activity. It may be that this would escalate to something, and this is a TJ question, but a criminal nuisance or a moral nuisance or something where it's really just the activity that's occurring. I know there has been a lot of calls for service out here between the four addresses. We think this was like a quicker route, and you have the clear authority under the code to let us do this, even though it's not something we typically do. So our recommendation is to let us move forward with noticing the tenants that are there that, that is being vacated and closed. And then we would go in and do a board up or secure it in another manner. At any point in time, the owner could choose to come back and fix things. I think getting, getting the folks out that are there right now will be the first step. We will have to let him fix things, you know. We're not trying to prevent improvements. But we have held him to a standard of we want to inspect every unit before it's offered to the public for rent again. We have not been allowed access into any of these units. So I think once it's vacant, that, that'll be another, we can get an administrative search warrant if we need to, to do inspections.
Jenny, how long do we have before they, how long do they have before they have to get out?
Okay, so we believe that the tenants out there right now are in a, like a tenancy at will, no written lease type of agreement. If the owner would have taken steps to evict, I mean, they, it's like a seven day notice period, and then there's some, you know, 14 days on the backside. We could maybe solve it in three weeks. We can't evict that way under the lease or no lease. It's a 30-day notice. So if you adopt this ordinance tonight directing us to do this, tomorrow, we could post notice to the occupied units that they have 30 days. If they continue to occupy after 30 days, then it would be the same as like a holdover tenancy or something, and we could proceed with eviction. It's summary ejectment. Saying that right.
Yeah, summary ejectment is the right term.
Jenny, I have a couple of questions, not specific to this case, but really the general regarding our penalties and our section 1115 civil criminal penalties.
My favorite part.
Well, first of all, I think, and I know we're probably governed on what our penalties can be, TJ, by what the state law will allow, which is, these penalties are a farce. They don't keep anyone from, they're hard, I mean, $50 for a first violation, leading up to a 10th violation at $250. That's not enough pain for somebody to stop their ways.
And after that, it goes to 500 after that, but yeah.
Okay. So that's my question. We, can we accelerate after the first or the second to 500? Do we have to follow this schedule?
We have to follow the schedule. It's a violation. Every day, it's in violation.
Okay. And so what triggers a violation in this case?
So we.
And who, who is triggered? Is it the tenants, the owners, both?
That's my question.
Yep. We have done some enforcement on this property against individual tenants and written citations, and they've gone nowhere because, you're right, they, they don't always work. Sometimes they do.
If it's the property owner, we can at least, the penalties that accrue can be taken as a lien, I would imagine?
No, they can't.
Well, so there's no real reason to assess a penalty that you're not ever going to collect.
That's why we don't write a lot of penalties. Yeah. We, sometimes they're effective, but not against the tenants because there's no, like, if they're not getting a tax return, or they're not, you know, then they're not going to have to pay it. And for a long time, we didn't have a good address to provide any sort of, to serve any notice on the owner because the owner was deceased. So in this case, we started a housing case when we, when the utilities went off, which was much later than the nuisance. By November 23rd, they were supposed to comply. They did not. On November 24th, I could have written the first citation, the $50, and then so on and so forth. We have not written citations on this one. We can, if that is the direction we want to go, we have been trying to track towards abatement. So we've been pushing this ordinance. I think it hurts more to lose your rental income than it does to get fined based on our schedule.
If there's even any income to it.
Yeah, exactly.
It looks like.
It seems like.
But if you, and I see both sides, but if you fail to enforce what an ordinance says you can, then why is it even in there? So recognizing we may not collect it, I'd like to see us fined these people.
And we can. We can, we can start.
Direction of the council would be on that, but they're in there for a reason, and it may be toothless, but it sends a message.
We, we more frequently use citations when we don't have city abatement as an option, and that tends to be how we do it. But we absolutely can write citations on this. Even as we go to abate, they're still in violation. So this is not the end of it here. Adopting this ordinance, also, we record it, and so it gets indexed into the, into the register of deeds that way, which is another thing that people often want to avoid. In this case, they're really not cooperating, so.
I'd like to say that I'm in total agreement with Todd, that we ought to use every tool in the toolbox that we have that, and even if we don't, if somebody doesn't pay these fines, we have that list for the next time. And I have been doing a lot of research in the, in the city, and I would really like to set the precedent that we are going to up our code enforcement and be much more aggressive with it when it's within our policies, because that's how we're going to make property available or get it brought up to standard, which is what we all want. We want more housing that is at standard and lawfully used. So I'm in agreement with that.
Jenny, could we not be more aggressive with the owner who has more to lose than just a tenant? Because the owner should be responsible for their properties. Tenant, if they're paying rent, they could care less much.
Right. I mean, and that, this would be the, getting aggressive with the owner. We've never pushed for this before, vacating and closing a unit like this. So, I mean, this is actually pretty aggressive. This is where we're at. The, the issue is that there's been so many nuisance violations and, and trouble with actually serving notice. If you can't serve somebody, you can't fine them. We, and they were tax delinquent. We sent it to tax foreclosure and did property search, and that, that's actually how we even got to a place where we could even enforce against the owner. So this has been like a textbook case of everything making it more difficult. We have not gotten cooperation, but yeah, as far as housing goes, they've only been in violation for about, since September. We worked the fastest case we could to get it before you guys so that we could have some teeth to do something.
We appreciate that. I know these folks that have had to deal with this for years are, appreciate that too.
It's so frustrating because you watch something decline, and I can't step in until it's declined to a certain point. And so it's like we saw it happening, and here we are. So, yeah, it's.
And also, hopefully through this process, we actually give the owner an opportunity to fix the property, you know, have it vacated and give them a chance to put these properties back into lawful service. And that's what we really want for any properties, if it's at all possible. So.
Meanwhile, he needs to be accruing fines.
That's right.
Yeah, I think it sounds like consensus is to go ahead and add that to it as well.
So if you're looking for a motion, I make a motion that we approve the order of abatement as Jenny has presented to us with caveat that we also begin with the implementation of the fines as allowed by the statute.
Okay. You've heard the motion from Councilmember Purdue that we proceed with the order of abatement. And I guess we can add to that, the fines into this motion?
It's already in the code, so we can do that.
It's in the code. Okay.
But it, just so it, a matter of record that I wanted that in.
Understand. Okay. So it's there. Anyway, any other discussion on it? I know this has been. Chief Phelps, I know you could probably extend and tell us a whole lot of things that I know we've been out there a number of times for different reasons with police matters and all that, and all that's documented. That's why we're here, where we are right now. And I know the neighborhood, I know you're, you've, we've all had a lot of calls and discussions and all that, and we are, we're trying, we want to do everything we can. It's, you know, an old neighborhood in the Laurel Creek section, and it's been there a long time, and we want to see it back the way it used to be and better. So anyway, if there's no other discussion, we've got a question before us. So I'll call for that question. All in favor of voting or proceeding with the order of abatement as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Thank you. Kerry's in. Thank you for your work on this, Jenny, Chief Phelps, all, everyone who has been involved in doing this, and let's move forward and as, as quick as we can. How about that?
There's a lot of waiting game with housing.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being with us too. All right. We will move then on to report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. War. Do you have anything tonight?
There will be some matters for closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Possibly some action, unless you want to come back on December 21st.
We'll, we'll do it tonight. Thank you for that. And from the mayor's office, we do have a board vacancy. I would like to announce from our planning board that we will, current vacancies there. And a person who has been with us a long time is stepping down. Not only she worked for the city for many, many years, Kay Reynolds, came on after she retired from the city, and we really appreciate all Kay has done. But she has served on our planning board, been a great member of that, brought her expertise to that. And she is now, feels like it's time for her to step down with some other reasons that she's got things going on. But we want to say thank you to Kay, not only for her time with us in the city, you know, our All-America City and the community gardens were making big projects of hers, and we are very proud of those things and proud of how she did such a great job of leading us into those directions. So we will miss Kay for that, but we will wish her the best. And we've got a couple of things very special for her on that. But anyway, we do have an open seat for that. So if you know anyone interested, please have them fill out their application and let us know that they have an interest in serving on not only this board, but any boards that we have for that. But we'll be under consideration for a person to come on the planning board in the, in the near future there. Okay. Any report from any of our council members at this time?
I would, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Lenora for supporting our seventh year turkey giveaway. This year was our seventh year. Unfortunately, we were unable to do that last year. But this year, we had over 350 turkeys that we gave away, and that is contributed to, attributed to the generosity of the citizens of Lenora and all those people that brought money or brought the turkeys. So I just want to say thank you, Lenora, for making somebody's turkey or somebody's Thanksgiving a success. So thank you.
Coming from the head turkey.
We didn't have to say that.
Turkey number one, turkey number two.
Yeah, that's right. We got the two head turkeys. And we appreciate Mayor Pro Tim Thomas and Councilmember Perkins for leading that effort. Now, as you said, for seven years, thank you for doing that. I know it means a lot to a lot of people. I was up there with you for a little bit. I was up there with you for a little bit, saw the people coming through, and I'll tell you what, it was, it was great. And, and Chief Phelps, thank you for the way your guys put it together and, and ran it, ran it. It was very smooth, and it was just a great operation. Appreciate you guys putting it together and planning that, so.
Our partial Rupert came up with, with the plan for the traffic flow.
Yeah.
I think we'll stick with that going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, that was very, very nicely done, so we appreciate that. Any other council members have anything for us tonight? Okay, we do have a closed session time pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11, subsection A, subsection 3, subsection 4. The city council will enter into the closed session to discuss economic development and attorney-client privilege. We entertain a motion to go into closed session.
There will be action. There will be action, Mayor.
There will be action.
And there will be action.
Yes. Motion from Mayor Protim Thomas to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.